Hey there listeners, this is Kathleen with a note about this episode and a note about the next episode. We recorded this episode shortly before all seven members of the Board of Education announced their resignations. And since that announcement, we here in Chicago have seen some rapid developments unfold around Chicago Public Schools, specifically from Mayor Brandon Johnson. Many of us watched his press conference on Monday, October 7th, where he announced the names of six appointees to the Board of Education. In our next episode, we will bring you an updated analysis of all that has unfolded since the resignations. And in that episode, we'll focus on the school board voting map and how it works for voters and what the implications are of Mayor Johnson's announced appointees to the board. We hope you'll join us.
Thanks for tuning in to episode one of From Selected to Elected. In this episode, Dr. Charlie Tocchi, an education historian from Loyola University, will join us to explore the history of the Chicago Board of Education. We'll look at how a 1995 Illinois law cemented mayoral control of the CPS Board of Education for more than 25 years.
Charlie, welcome to From Selected to Elected.
Thanks very much. I'm really excited to be here and talk about this important issue.
What many Chicagoans and people beyond Chicago might not know is that the Chicago Board of Education was always appointed by the mayor. Tell us about that.
So, the 1872 law passed by the Illinois Legislature that created the Chicago Board of Education gave the authority to pick its board members directly to the mayor. Uh, this was, 1872 was before the progressive era movements which saw elected school boards emerge as a democratic reform, as a way to try to create more democratic control over our municipal systems across the country. And really root out the use of school systems as favors and as part of the political machine. It was seen that if you could elect your school board members and they weren't appointed by the mayor, then those school board members wouldn't give jobs to their friends, to their cousins and uh, and use it as spoils for winning elections. Uh, but Chicago bypassed that, like many of those anti-corruption reforms of the early 20th century. Uh, Chicago avoided those, uh, and their mayors were able to navigate around those reform movements. So mayoral control has been the history of, uh, uh, has been the history of the Chicago Public Schools and the Chicago Board. The mayor has always picked all of the members of the board and always been able to replace them when he's not happy with the decisions that they've made. That starts to shift in the 1980s. There's a period from 1969 into the 1980s where CPS is hit with a number of strikes. There are nine strikes between 1969 and 1987. Uh, and these really come to a head in the mid 1980s when Harold Washington is elected mayor. Uh, I remember when I started teaching in CPS and some of the old time teachers would tell me about the strikes in the eighties or the times in the eighties when they would get paid in IOUs. They weren't actually getting paid by the school board. They were getting IOUs and they would have to go to their landlords and say, hey, will you take this until the school board can pay me again? Uh, and so the school district was in desperate financial condition. Uh, and the CTU organized a number of strikes to try to change the system and try to create better conditions. So there were a lot of disruption. There was also a lot of unhappiness between the public as well as uh, the business community in Chicago who felt that the school system was a main drag on the city's reputation as well as their ability, uh, to work in the city and to lead business in the city. So, uh, as Washington was approaching his reelection in, which would be in 1987, he's trying to figure out how to mediate this tension. There are parts of the public are unhappy with the school system. CTU is unhappy with the school system. The business community is unhappy and he lands on this idea of organizing an education summit that he would bring together a variety of stakeholders for a series of events to talk about the school system and try to find common ground for reform efforts uh, and ultimately change the system. So the summit, uh, has representatives from different parts of the city, uh, parent groups, CTU, the business community, uh, and they put a large variety of ideas on the table, some of which include breaking up CPS into three different districts, try to make them smaller and more manageable in size, to change the ways, uh, CTU, uh, change the way that CPS is funded, uh, radically change the structure. Uh, and then there's another strike in early 1987, uh, CTU goes on strike for 19 days. And so this really pushes the issue to a crisis and, uh, Washington decides that he's going to dramatically ramp up the summit, that he's got this process going and that this can be a way to respond. So he leads what he calls a series of brainstorming sessions that are held in all different corners of the city that ultimately more than a thousand people will participate in to just share their ideas about what could happen, what they would like to see in CPS. Uh, I remember I was, a couple of years ago, I was on a panel with Charles Payne. He was talking about going to one of these brainstorming sessions, which was held in one of the high rises in Cabrini-Green. And he was there with parents from Cabrini-Green, uh, but also some, uh, some loop business leaders who would come up to attend the meeting and participate as well. That, at least the way that Charles was describing them, that these were really kind of democratic spaces where lots of people were talking about this. Uh, unfortunately though, in November of, of 1987, uh, Washington has a heart attack and passes away. Uh, but the, the summit had developed a lot of momentum, had a lot of energy to it. And, uh, it was picked up by Michael Madigan. Uh, and so Madigan picks up the mantle of all of the energy and ideas that have come out of the summit. Uh, and in the course of, uh, late 87, early 88, Madigan holds a series of meeting, closed doors meetings in his offices, uh, in Springfield and writes, uh, a new bill that would substantially overhaul the structure of CPS. Uh, and so there's this funny moment where this very public education summit gets taken up by Madigan and it becomes a closed door affair uh, with a small number of lobbyists and business elites coming in and drafting this bill that would totally change how CPS works.
So that bill that you're talking about, that Madigan was drafting, becomes this 1988 school reform law. Um, and the biggest outcome of that is local school councils. And I think it's interesting, I, I was reading Elizabeth Todd Breland's book and as, as people might know, she's a member of the current Chicago Board of Education. Her book is called A Political Education and she says that law marked a time when, and I quote, "Chicago embarked on a groundbreaking experiment with decentralization and local control of schools." Todd Breland also tells us that 312,000 people voted in the first LSC elections. People were excited about this shift to local control of schools. That 88 law also created, um, something called the School Board Nominating Commission. So this commission consisted of five mayoral appointees and 23 LSC community or parent members selected by their peers. And that commission was responsible for creating lists of candidates from which the mayor was to choose new Board of Education members. So talk about decentralization. But as Todd Breland notes, that moment was short-lived because along comes Mayor Richard M. Daley. Um, and in the early nineties, so he ascended to the mayoralship in the late eighties and then in the early nineties, he's in his early years as Chicago's mayor and he has big, big plans for Chicago that intersect largely with, uh, civic and corporate interests in Chicago. And one of his main goals is to make Chicago into a global city, one that has state of the art everything from cultural attractions to hotels to businesses. And the beautification of downtown is the aesthetic centerpiece of his plans. Um, you know, I often tell, um, people who are of a much younger generation than I, you know, Grant Park did not used to look like that. Those beautiful planters that run down Michigan Avenue and other downtown streets were not there. And so, you know, we see Grant Park become more beautified with Maggie Daley Park. Pritzker Pavilion comes along, replacing the Petrillo Music Shell as Ground Zero for live music in the park. And we also see those planters, like I mentioned. Um, so the other, the other side of this coin though, is that this quote unquote development is focused only on seven of the city's 70 neighborhoods and these neighborhoods are mostly in the Loop and surrounding areas. And all of this comes at the expense of what some refer to as quote unquote slum clearance in some of those areas surrounding the Loop, where many people are low income, working class, many people of color, there's an Italian population around there. And so these areas are cleared so that what's thought of as reinvestment can come in, but not reinvestment for the Chicagoans who are living there. And besides all this, Daley's plan is about more than aesthetics. So in 1995, the Illinois Legislature jumps in to Chicago's business and passes a law giving Mayor Daley and future Chicago mayors the legal power to appoint Chicago Board of Education members.
So what I'm interested in learning more about Charlie is why downstate Illinois legislators cared so much about Chicago's school board.
That's always been one of the great splits in Illinois is the downstate legislators versus the Chicago legislators and fighting over governance of Chicago Public Schools, uh, and how that system will be managed. When we look at all of the laws written for education in Illinois, uh, almost all of them have a carve-out specific to CPS. Almost all of them have language around, uh, different policies governing school districts of 50,000 students or more. And the only district that does that is CPS. So that's always been one of the core tensions. Part of what's happening here in the mid nineties is that CPS had been saddled with this reputation as the worst school district in the country. In 1987, then Secretary of Education William Bennett comes to Chicago uh, and on television says CPS is the worst school district in the country. And that reputation sticks. It gives it a, a negative national brand, uh, that persists and gets used, um, as a political punching bag over and over by national politicians who want to take the mantle of school reform. This is the era of standards and a lot of new emphasis on, you know, improving school systems. And so Chicago becomes this kind of national punching bag, uh, because the Secretary of Education had branded it the worst. Uh, and by 1995, uh, Daley is now in his second term. So he's established himself, been reelected, and is now turning to the school system as a big project that he wants to take on and remake in his own image. So the confluence of factors here, one, that uh, the, the image of Chicago Public Schools is the worst in the country, sort of is of interest to politi- politicians up and down the state of Illinois who would like to be part of solving that. And we have Mayor Daley going to Springfield and saying, I would like control of this system. I would like much more direct control of this system so that I could put my stamp on it and comprehensively perform it. So there's a little bit of interest convergence there. I also think some of the downstate politicians were happy to hand things over to Daley and in expectations that it would fail and they could then saddle Daley with that failure.
One of the results of mayoral control is the appointment of a CEO to head up to the BOE. Um, why the term to CEO? And is that just a shift in title? Yeah, I'm curious about that.
Yeah. So as far as I know, we are the only school district that has a CEO, that no one else has adopted that language. And that was a specific ask from Daley. The 1990s is the start of the corporate school reform movement. Uh, the idea that schools should be run like a business, they should be run in, uh, with the efficiency of a business and the very beginning stirrings of the idea that if we create a market for education, then, uh, we can really tap into the efficiencies and use competition as a way to improve our schools. This is all still very much in its infancy. But Daley alights upon this idea that as a symbolic show of how thoroughly he is going to change the system, we're going to move away from the language of superintendents and go with CEO. Uh, it is largely symbolic. It's totally possible that the uh, state legislator could have given a superintendent all of the same powers and given, uh, the superintendent position that authority to make dramatic changes. But the request for the title CEO was a symbolic change that we're going to change the way we do business and it's going to be business now. We're going to empower one person to have executive authority up and down the system and make the changes that he sees fit. And that's going to be in close consultation with the mayor's office. And in some ways, the Board of Education is going to be pushed to the side since this new CEO, uh, though appointed by the board, is going to be in close contact and work directly with the mayor to make changes.
All right, let's talk about some of those CEOs. The first CEO was someone whose name should be really familiar to a lot of Chicagoans because he just ran for mayor. Paul Vallis. Um, what policies came out of his time as CEO?
Yes, Paul Vallis was the CEO when I started my career in CPS. So, uh, Paul and I go way back. Uh, Vallis came over from the mayor's budget office. So he did not have a background in education. Uh, he was not, uh, he was not an insider in Chicago Public Schools or necessarily even really well informed about school systems, education, urban education. But Daley saw that as a plus. Uh, Daley had liked the way Vallis had, uh, worked the city's budget and met the expectations that Daley had laid out and wanted somebody who was sort of, uh, both compliant and strategic in the same way to take over CPS and bring that same sort of mindset uh, that, uh, radical changes could be implemented bureaucratically into that new CEO job. Uh, and so, uh, Vallis, uh, starts to pull on a number of, uh, uh, of school reform trends at the time. On the curriculum side, uh, he brings standardized tests right into the core of the curriculum. Uh, and we see them taking outsized influence and the first pieces of accountability being built up, test-based accountability in our school system. Uh, again, when I started in CPS, we had something called the case exams in high school. Every semester, every student in the core subject areas had to take a stand, CPS develops standardized test and then, uh, all the teachers would have their evaluations partially based on that, would have to sit with our administrators and talk about how our kids scored on these exams that were written by who knows where, by who, who knows who. Um, uh, so there, you know, he's bringing in test-based accountability into the curriculum. And the test-based accountability is also informing, uh, this dramatic school reform model called reconstitution that, uh, some schools that were lowly enrolled and performing poorly on standardized tests could be reconstituted. Uh, this would mean firing almost all of the staff and then being restaffed possibly as a smaller school. Uh, and Vallis also starts to work with national networks to bring in things like small schools uh, and then collaborate with the legislature downstate to start the first charter schools in the city of Chicago, CICS, Noble, the first wave of charters that come through. The, one of the other long-term effects Vallis brought with him was taking a pension contribution holiday. So, uh, instead of paying the full expected amount into the teacher's pension and his administrator's pension each year, uh, he worked with Daley and the legislature downstate to get approval to take a holiday from making those payments and instead keep that money in the CPS budget and spend it on schools, curriculum and other things within the district. That's had long-term repercussions as we sit here now facing a billion dollar shortfall and a very underfunded pension system. So that, that decision, which helped sort of juice the reform movement that was being started by Vallis has this long tail effect of putting us in a budget crunch right now.
Yeah, and that accountability ethos that undergirded Vallis's actions really, um, that also really affected teachers. This is not, and not just in Chicago, but at this time nationally, teachers are being looped into that, um, accountability mechanism. And so we see evaluations of teachers being based, um, in lot, not in large part, but in, in many different ways on standardized tests of their students at this time. Vallis also, and you, you talked about the reconstitution, um, going along with that, he placed 109 schools, 109 on academic probation and that curtailed the authority of their local school councils. So this is only eight years after that 1988 law that created LSCs and centralized more power in the hands of parents and community members. So, you know, a lot of people are, are kind of side-eyeing all this, like, what are you doing? You know, we, we had, we have this stuff in place and now you're, you're upending it. Another result of that 1995 law that established mayoral control of CPS that we haven't talked about is that it limited collective bargaining by the Chicago Teachers Union. So prior to the 1995 laws you were mentioning before, Chicago saw a boatload of teacher strikes. I remember them and I did not even grow up in Chicago. So in the eighties, I'm a kid, you know, I'm a teenager, I'm, I'm a middle school student and a high school student down in, in Springfield, Illinois. And we got WGN as one of our cable channels and I recall watching the WGN evening news and seeing news report after news report about teacher strikes from the time, you know, I was in elementary school through high school. So Charlie, how, how did that 1995 law put a dent in CTU's ability to strike?
Yeah, so there was an amendment on the 1995 law. So it wasn't part of Madigan's original bill, but the amendment gets added and is passed, uh, at what appears to be as at the request of Mayor Daley, but that's not entirely clear. Uh, but the amendment shrinks what, uh, CTU can collectively bargain over. So now with the amendment passed, they can only bargain, collectively bargain over, uh, pay and benefits. No longer can they talk about quality of work issues or other policy issues that shape the Chicago Public Schools. Right? They have to just focus on pay and benefits. The hope there was that, um, it would dramatically lessen, uh, the number of strikes that the CTU could bring fewer different kinds of demands or requests to the table when collectively bargaining. They would just focus on pay. And, uh, Daley did have a strong track record of providing, uh, the good pay increases in collective bargaining agreements. So part of his overall plan for managing the city was being somewhat generous with pay, uh, pay increases into the different collective bargaining agreements that the city entered into with its unionized workers. Uh, but that came at the expense of, uh, CTU losing the ability to negotiate and make requests over this larger system, which was now under much more direct control of the CEO and by extension, the mayor's office.
Okay, so after Vallis was Arn Duncan. He comes along as the next CPS CEO. He's at the helm for quite a while compared to many other CPS CEOs, right? I think it's from 01 to 09. And Duncan, as many recall, was later, um, the former president Obama's, uh, Secretary of Education. What policies would you say characterized Duncan's time as CEO?
The Duncan era is where we see Chicago really emerge as the leader in what is now, we now think of as neoliberal reforms. That Chicago becomes the place that moves the fastest to adopt the idea of creating a marketplace for schools. Uh, we get told that sometimes the portfolio district, the basics of it is that we give, uh, parents as many options for their children as possible and create competition between schools and that that competition between schools will either force those schools to improve or if they don't improve, will lose their students, lose enrollment and then make it easy for the district to close them down. Arnie's signature plan to reform the district is called Renaissance 2010. He announces it in 2004. Basics of it are that the, the district will open 100 schools by the year 2010 and really create that marketplace of schools that will create competition, uh, and raise up the schools that are doing the best and, uh, and identify the schools that are struggling the most that can be either more dramatically reformed or closed. And in doing this, the district opens a number of schools and, uh, they also exploit a loophole in the charter school law that allows for one charter to open schools in multiple sites, which is why we see Noble Street have, uh, one charter, but multiple Noble Streets across the city or a Sero that does the same thing or CICS. So Arnie leads this process to open 100 schools across CPS within six years, exactly the same time where enrollment starts to go off a cliff here in CPS. Uh, we see the dramatic, uh, a dramatic increase in the number of black families leaving the south and west sides of the city. And as enrollment declines overall in the district, we're at a height of almost 400, 430,000 students in the mid 2000s and today we're sitting at about 100,000 students, less than that. We're increasing the number of schools while the number of students is decreasing. And this creates a dramatic oversupply of seats. Still today, we have about, uh, 50% more high school seats than we do for, uh, high school students. And this becomes, uh, this the oversupply of seats becomes an efficiency issue for the district. We have many more schools and many more seats than we need. And it brings about the first wave of modern closures that at a smaller scale, one, two, a few schools per year, uh, Arnie is bringing to the board the need to close schools that are losing enrollment because there just aren't enough kids anymore to fill the seats for dramatically expanded school districts.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, I don't have much to add to that because I think you really covered a lot of what Duncan is known for and Duncan did. Um, I think, you know, to summarize, he was lauded and still is by some folks for improving test scores and graduation rates in CPS. But at the same time, he's been criticized for this growth in privatization through that, that marketing of schools. Um, and also too great an emphasis on testing.
And then we see a ton of turnover in the CEO seat after Duncan. Eight more CEOs, including the current one, Pedro Martinez. It was Ron Huberman, Jean-Claude Bizardt, then Triple B, right? Barbara Bird Bennett, who was ultimately convicted of staring around $23 million in no bid CPS contracts to two companies where she had formerly worked, right? She received around 10% in kickbacks as part of the deal. Bird Bennett would spend four and a half years in prison as a result and after that was briefly in home confinement up to 2021. And then there's Forrest Claypool, who resigned after CPS's inspector general found he'd committed ethics violations. And Dr. Janice Jackson, who was the first former CPS educator to take the helm in 20 years, right? And now we have Pedro Martinez, who was CPS Chief Finance Officer under Arn Duncan.
Yeah, and, um, and you know, this, this current Board of Education are all appointed by Mayor Brandon Johnson. And, and it's a different kind of board than we've seen over the last 25 years in terms of their professional backgrounds. So before this current board, board members tended to be representatives from corporate and civic organizations around the city. So, you know, for example, Daley's first pick for board president back in the mid nineties was Gary Chico, who Gary was his former chief of staff. So, you know, somebody considered a political, political insider. Um, we also see along the way, Michael Scott, um, senior, who, um, the late Michael Scott senior, who was a cable, uh, you know, AT&amp;T, for example, AT&amp;T broadband, um, uh, executive, um, Rufus Williams, who's a finance guy. Uh, and those were appointed by Daley. Then under Rahm Emanuel, he appoints David Battali, who's a banking and finance guy. Um, Frank Clark, who was the CEO of ComEd. And then leading up to Mayor Lori Lightfoot's appointment of Miguel Del Valle, who's a politician, you know, former city clerk. Um, he ran for mayor. So Charlie, can you tell us more about this shift in focus that we've seen most recently from board members who are these, you know, sort of corporate and civic heavy hitters? heavy hitters to the current boards' resumes, which are, which are quite di-
Yeah, I think Daley and then really we can see clearly with Rahm, thought about the CPS board, the way that corporations think about their board of directors. And you want to bring in people strategically who will be investors or who will provide sort of synergies or other kinds of partnerships and opportunities to a corporate board. And we see that Rahm and Daley had the same mindset. So bringing in, you know, members of the corporate community, bringing in uh, former university presidents. We had a few of those under Rahm, uh, and trying to build out this board that would bring in either investments or sort of other kinds of uh, opportunities that they saw as necessary for the district, usually corporate connection. Uh, but Brandon Johnson's brought in folks that fit his coalition, which is a very different coalition than we have seen in Chicago politics for 40 years. At the closest it looks is Harold Washington back in the 1980s. And so, you know, on the board, um, we've got President Xi, who of course came through, raise your hand uh, before joining the board, but before that was a teacher. Uh, and it's been a long time since we've had, um, uh, you know, somebody who would, who would recently come out of the classroom on the board. We have Elizabeth Todd Breland, who is a historian of education, a superb historian of education uh, on the board. Uh, Michelle Morales, who has a long history of community organizing work, working in uh, nonprofit organizations. Uh, and recent, shortly before joining the board, uh, was the director of the MICA Challenge, which is a phenomenal uh, social studies, education, and action civics organization with deep roots here in Chicago and a national uh, network of, of sites. So the profile significantly changed. These are, Johnson's board members are really people with, uh, many of them with deep community roots, long organizing experience and lots of different connections directly to Chicago Public Schools.
And then we also have Mary Fahey Hughes, who's uh, one of the most significant special education advocates in public education across the city. And then Rudy Lozano Jr. is also a member of the current Board of Education. And his father, Rudy Lozano Senior, was elected 22nd Ward Alderman back in 1983 at the time of uh, Mayor Harold Washington's administration. And so Lozano Senior served as a mouthpiece of sorts or a liaison, if you will, um, from Mayor Washington to the Latino community at the time. Um, unfortunately, um, uh, Lozano Senior was assassinated by a gang member um, in 1983. But he had also led um, a lot of uh, walkouts at what was then called Harrison High School, which led to the formation of Juarez High School. So his son Rudy Lozano Jr. is a current board member, um, who has pulled his own weight as a community organizer, um, and activist and in person involved with Chicago nonprofits.
For this question, we want to touch on this next question briefly because we have a whole future episode dedicated to it. Starting in January of 2025, the new hybrid board will be seated. It will have 21 members, half-elected, half-appointed by Mayor Brandon Johnson, and one board president will also be appointed by the mayor. All right, so we know this board will sit um, until a fully elected board is seated in 2027. Many in Chicago and ed policy experts have criticized that number, questioning how a board that size will be able to reach any sort of consensus. So briefly, Charlie, what does the public education landscape nationally tell us about this? Are any other big city boards similar in size?
So Chicago is the third largest school district in the country and uh, no other school district has, uh, no other larger urban school district has a board that will be as large as 21 members. So it will be unique like that. For context, New York City has a 15-member board and their board is completely appointed by the mayor. Uh, Los Angeles has a second-largest school system. They have a seven-person elected board. And then Houston has the fourth-largest system and they have a nine-member elected board. It'll be unprecedented for a big city district to have this many members. And I can understand why some people are afraid that it might lead to gridlock or paralysis, but it also seems like a great opportunity for board members to have to be responsive to community members, that our districts are small enough that folks are gonna, that board members are gonna have to be there. They're gonna have to be engaged if they want to uh, keep their seats and, and be reelected. There's no place to hide when the districts are carved up uh, it, at this size, which is, I think, a good thing given our history. You know, our history is that, you know, the mayor picks the board members and the whole city votes for the mayor. So of all the issue that the mayors sits across, education is just one. So they've only ever been really partially responsive to the concerns of the community when it comes to education and certainly not deeply engaged with the concerns of any given community, especially if it sits outside their sort of political base. But now we're going to have people who um, will be on the board representing, you know, Englewood, representing uh, Edgewater, representing North Center, uh, representing Austin. And those folks are going to be accessible to community members in a way that we've never seen before. I think it's a tremendous opportunity.
So before I ask you, before I ask our last question, Charlie, I, I want to go back to something that we did not close the loop on, and that is uh, the limitations that were put on the CTU back in the nineties um, on what they could collectively bargain around. And I want to go back to this just very briefly because I think um, it, it's really important to our current public education political context with Mayor Brandon Johnson coming from uh, CTU organizing background. Um, Stacy Davis Gates, um, you know, is, seems to be a trusted advisor of his. So I just want to mention that there was this law passed very recently in 2022 in Illinois that um, allows government unions to negotiate over any type of provision and for their contracts to supersede state law. Um, so this, this was good news for CTU because in that way, they were able to reclaim a lot of what they lost in, in that um, decision in the nineties. Um, so um, an ungraceful segue to our last question, um, is, it's a simple question. You know, why should Chicagoans care about this election? I think, you know, just personally speaking, I haven't heard a lot of chat about it, um, and, you know, beyond my immediate circle of uh, edu geek friends, um, and, you know, I think it's, it's important to me, um, as a former teacher. I know it's important to raise your hand because they have sat, you know, at, at the center of so much um, movement toward common sense reform over the years for CPS. So how is this Board of Education's work important to everyday Chicagoans? And why should they care about this very significant election that's coming up?
Yeah, CPS touches every corner of the city in a way that I don't think any other of our institutions do. It, it is definitely directly involved in the lives of all the parents who send their children to CPS. Uh, but they're also core institutions in neighborhoods. Almost everyone in the city lives within walking distance of a CPS school. And almost everyone in the city has a personal relationship with the school in some way or another. Like CPS, our schools are part of our lives in a way that almost no other institution in the city really are. All of us should care about the school board race because for the first time, we're going to have an unprecedented number of candidates, an unprecedented number of years listening to us, our hopes, our dreams, our frustrations about the school system, that institution that touches all of our lives and is part of all of our communities. Never before has there been such an opportunity for us to be engaged and really have our voices heard in a way that will shape policy citywide. You know, we touched a little bit of on how local school councils started with a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of investment. And in recent years, we've seen uh, how LSCs have struggled to fill their seats. LSCs are struggling to get people to vote for them. They're struggling uh, to keep uh, that community engagement alive. And this is really an opportunity for us to create a new place to engage, a new place to shape policy, a new place to really collectively build the system that we want.
All right, thank you so much, Charlie, for joining us for today's episode, walking us through the importance of, you know, what, what makes school boards um, important in the history of them here in Chicago. I can't help but feel inspired about this moment. Chicago's first elected school board is more than just a milestone, clearly. Um, from what we heard today, it's a chance for all of us as community members, parents, teachers, neighbors, to have a direct hand in shaping the future of our schools. Get involved in the process. We'll have upcoming episodes that will discuss and unpack this process and also discuss issues at the intersection that impact public schools. I'm personally excited about this election season. So stay tuned for more episodes of From Selected to Elected. We'll see you soon.